All right. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the December 2nd, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Township of Montclair Planning Board. In accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and by sending a copy to the newspaper designated by the township for notices. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live and will be available on demand on YouTube. This meeting is a quasi-judicial proceeding, meaning that the Board has powers and procedures resembling a court of law, and we are obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis of an official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Fire exits are to my right, which is your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. And first up is roll call.
Mayor Baskerville.
Present.
Mr. Borshoff. Mr. Campbell.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Ian Wally.
Here.
Counselor Lockman.
Here.
Mr. Falese. Ms. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
And Mr. Nieman.
Here.
And Chair Brodak.
I'm here. Okay, the minutes for November will be carried to the next meeting. We'll discuss them then. And that brings up the resolution for Application 2904, which is 249 Valley Road.
And I received corrections from Chair Brodak and Counselor Lockman.
I actually saw those and appreciate every time, every time you guys do that. I just have one thing I would like to kind of clarify. You were one of the changes to the paragraph on the top of Page 4 where it says detriment associated with it, and the witness supported the positive criteria by citing, you crossed off "a" and added the word "the," several criteria, several purposes. The only thing that came to my mind was that the purposes relied on by the applicant were only three or four. When you say "the" several purposes, I wouldn't want anyone to be confused by thinking that all of the purposes under the MLUL were being relied on. So that was my only disagreement with the change that you had made.
But little words make a difference.
You know?
I think you could just get rid of-
That's why we have jobs.
I got paid for that word, okay?
I didn't. I think if you just get rid of "the," that's-
And just leave it as "a," is that okay?
Or just citing, yes, several purposes, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question.
We need to approve right first, or? Oh, sorry, Tony, is this in related?
Question on the resolution.
On the resolution. Apologies, my apologies.
So the HPC has design. Is it that simple? Inside, outside?
Just, right?
We had a discussion about this during the course of the meeting. HPC can only have approval on that which can be seen.
Any other questions or comments?
Who's second is that? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Okay, next up, we have a discussion of the resolution approval timeline for Application 2833, which is 509 Park Street.
My name is Diana McGovern, and I am the attorney for the applicant.
Can you just make sure the microphone's turned on?
Okay, sorry. I'll start again. Diana McGovern from the law firm of Gashion Pamako on behalf of the applicant, 509 Park Street. This application was granted for a subdivision and memorialized by the Board in a resolution January 22nd, 2024. Before we were able to perfect the subdivision on March 15th, 2024, a neighbor filed an appeal, a prerogative writ, and I am happy to advise the Board on November 22nd, Judge Sewell's ruled in the favor of the Board's decision and dismissed the prerogative writ. However, more than 190 days transpired from the date that the prerogative writ was filed until the dismissal. And we are requesting that, in accordance with NJSA 40:55D-47, Section E, that the time carried be told and that we receive a new resolution to that effect so that we can file the deed with the clerk.
How much time do you think you want?
Well, I'm going to say at least 45 days in case. We don't have the signed order yet from the court. And in the event, and the attorney for the plaintiff in the case indicated that they would not, he would not be recommending an appeal, anything can happen. So I'm going to request six months. I know we can't have more than a year, but I think six months. The way the statute reads to me, it looks like the tolling time is the amount of time that we lost from the time that we were disrupted. So I'm just going to give it a ballpark. It's actually more than six months, but if we could have six months, I would appreciate it.
Six months from the day of the filing of the prerogative writ action, or six months-
Six months from today.
From today?
Yes.
Ye of little faith in the filing of an appeal.
Listen, it'll be done a lot sooner. If my client had his way, we'd be filing it tomorrow, but that's one of the things we have to worry about.
So you need the order from the court, and then you need a resolution from us?
And then we need a resolution from you.
And then you can go file?
And then we can file the deed, yes.
I mean, I don't see an issue with a six-month extension, given what happened here. Yeah, I think it is too. So I would move to give you an extension from six months from today to file the deed.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening. Next up, we have Application 2903, which is one-
Just real quick, if I can, when we turn into business, I just wanted-
Sure.
So my term as first alternate is up at the end of the month. I let the council know that I can't stand for reappointment. I just wanted everybody to know a couple things. I mean, the first is that I, because I have a leadership position in my firm, I had to get permission to serve. I kind of asked forgiveness, not permission, when then Mayor Spiller asked me to do this. And, you know, that stood a while, but I couldn't, I couldn't continue it. And so I, that's why I can't continue to serve. But I wanted to let everybody know. It has been such an honor to serve alongside you all. I have learned a lot. And what I've learned most of all, and I just wanted to, I wanted you all to hear this. I've worked in the state government. I've been a student of township government since I moved here, and I've seen a lot of bodies in this town and the state that don't find a way to do this right. A lot of us have different opinions. We share those opinions. We argue. We come to, you know, we come to conclusions. We vote. Sometimes we don't agree. We split. We have never become contentious on this planning board. As the makeup has changed, we've been led well, we've done it right. And I just wanted you all to know that it has truly been a pleasure to serve alongside you. You and I agree on nothing. Nothing. And I am so happy that we've had the discussions we've had. I've learned so much from you. It's changed my mind about some things, and, you know, I can say that about so many people in this room. And I just wanted everybody to hear just how sad I am to be leaving this group because it's a, it's a great group of people that does hard work for no appreciation, except, not from, not from the mayor. I know the mayor appreciates you. But, but it's, it's been an honor. And I, and I just wanted, you know, I will be leaving you in body, but not in spirit.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. I miss my buddy.
And I think you've taught us a lot, too. I mean-
I know I taught Arthur.
I think you've taught some of the applicants some things, too.
We didn't even get paid for those words.
I love that you always spoke your mind, you know? No restraint, yeah.
Yeah, we're definitely going to miss you. It's been an honor serving with you. I hope somehow things would change and, you know, you can come back to us.
The future is the future, and I just gotta, I need to calm things down a little bit, but the future is the future, and the mayor knows my esteem for her and Ms. Lockman and the council, and it's-
I'm laughing. I'm saying now, I shouldn't take this personally because, you know, I've always admired you and your work ethics, and I've looked for ways that we can work together for a while now. I've asked him to run with me for office, and we've explored some other things. And now I'm like, oh, good. Well, at least, you know, I can benefit from his wisdom on the planning board, and now you're leaving there. But I certainly will miss you, and I know our paths will continue to cross, and I will value so much what I've learned over the years from you, and thank you.
Of course. Thanks for taking it. All right.
We're all gonna go out and get drunk after this.
All right. I think now we'll go to Application 2903, One Seymour Plaza.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow members of the Board. For the record, Richard Schneider of the law firm of Vogel, Cheek, Collins, and Schneider, on behalf of the applicant, New York S M S A Limited Partnership, who I'll refer to as Verizon Wireless. The matter before you this evening seeks approval of what I would objectively, and I hope and am confident that you will agree, is a, I think, very well-designed and frankly visually inconsequential wireless communication facility on the property located at One Seymour Plaza. The application proceeds before you this evening essentially representing the culmination of what I think has been a very productive and collaborative process between the applicant and the township, resulting ultimately in the amendment of the redevelopment plan to permit wireless communication facilities on this particular property, and I'll get into that in a minute. The property in question, as I referenced, is located at One Seymour Plaza, located within the Seymour Street redevelopment plan. It is, as referenced by Ms. Tally, the interior lot between the Wellmount Arts Plaza and the South Fullerton parking lot. I reference this collaborative process in the following context. The Seymour Street redevelopment plan originally did not permit wireless communication facilities as a permitted use. Therefore, in order to provide a wireless communication facility at that particular property, the applicant would not, had no legal recourse to permit or seek approval even for a wireless communication facility. When you're in a redevelopment plan, as specifically set forth in your own redevelopment plan, you cannot get a use variance from the Board of Adjustment. You are precluded from doing that. So what we did was, we approached the township and said, there's a critical need to provide wireless communication services to this particular area. And frankly, and respectfully, we worked very hard with Ms. Tally to discuss that process for an extended period of time. And ultimately, in sparing you all the relevant details, there was this process ultimately resulting in an amendment to the redevelopment plan to permit wireless communication facilities not only on this, within the Seymour Street redevelopment plan, but more specifically only on this particular building. Why I think that's important is, it reflects a clear intent of the township to permit wireless communication facilities on this property, presumably recognizing the need for critically important wireless communication facilities. The application itself seeks approval for 12 antennas to be located on the roof together with equipment located on the roof. I think for those board members who've had the opportunity to review in advance the visual analysis that has been submitted, I think we've gone through some painstaking efforts to try to make this as visually inconsequential as one can imagine. I think that's a, for what it is worth, we had a, I think, a very productive review by the Historic Preservation Commission. They were, as reflected in the memorandum, which I'm sure and trust that you've had the opportunity, they were supportive of the application, and I think it's a fair comment to make that they were frankly searching for trying to locate where the antennas were located and this particular structure. There are, notwithstanding that, two deviations from the amendment to the Seymour Street redevelopment plan. Essentially, the antennas cannot exceed the height of the parapet to which it is attached. We actually have a one-foot, I bond you, one-foot deviation. And frankly, I think if you look at that visual analysis, it's very difficult to determine that or focus in on that one-foot deviation. The other deviation is that the equipment cannot exceed a maximum height of 80 feet above ground elevation. The equipment in this particular case, by virtue of its location on the roof, is located at 84 feet above ground elevation and not screened, although I think as you can again conclude from the visual analysis, there is no visibility of that equipment to anybody from the public right of way. And those deviations, just as a matter of setting some foundations, are specifically authorized to be granted within the Seymour Street redevelopment plan. So with that hopefully helpful background, I have three witnesses this evening. The first is Mr. Andrew Peterson. He's the applicant's radio frequency engineer. He will provide an overview as to essentially why Verizon needs this particular facility, and he'll also give you some additional testimony for the purpose of confirming that the levels of radio frequency emissions are in strict compliance with FCC standards. The second is Mr. Frank Colosserdo. He's the applicant's architect. He'll review all the relevant, so to speak, site plan details of the proposed facility. And the third is Mr. David Carlback. He's the applicant's professional planner. So with that background, Mr. Chairman, unless there's any questions from me, I'll prepare to proceed with my first witness.
I'd like to just note that Mr. Jacobson left the dais at the beginning of this application, and I'd like, when Ms. Tally gets back, I'd like to mark exhibits first. And Counselor Lockman.
A question for you. You kept saying this equipment will be located on the roof, but that's not, it's on the side of the building, isn't it? Some of it?
It's on the, I mean, I'll have testimony on it. It's on-
Right. It's not on the roof necessarily. It's attached to the side of the building. Isn't that correct? Oh, I could wait until you-
Yeah, I'll have him give you the exact location.
Keep that question in mind.
Right. Just one more. You're talking, you're not talking about 5G wireless, small cell wireless. You're talking-
There may be, I'll have the RF witness testify as to the exact, but this is not just a 5G installation. This is not an OAS node or anything of that. This will provide service at all of Verizon's frequency bands.
All right. Can we mark exhibits?
Mr. Schneider, we can mark the exhibits.
Okay.
A1 is the application. A2 is the certification of taxes paid. A3 is the proof of publication. A4 is the affidavit of service. A5 is the site plan prepared by FCA Architects dated May 10th, 2023, revised October 16th, 2024. A6 is the electromagnetic exposure analysis prepared by DBM Engineering dated July 1st, 2024. A7 is the radio frequency design analysis prepared by DBM Engineering dated June 24th, 2024. A8 is the visual analysis prepared by TK Design Associates dated August 16th, 2024, and revised October 28th, 2024. A9 is the photo exhibit prepared by FCA Architects dated November 7th, 2024. A10 is the report from the Development Review Committee dated October 31st, 2024. A11 is the report from the Historic Preservation Commission dated November 7th, 2024. And A12 is the planning report dated November 18th, 2024.
Thank you.
You may proceed.
Mr. Peterson?
Janice, can you just tell me who's on the DRC?
It would have been Norberto, myself, Jacob. I don't believe Jeff was there, and Bill Harrison.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you please state your full name and business affiliation for the record?
Sure. Andrew Peterson, P-E-T-P-R-S-O-H-N. My firm is DBM Engineering. I'm here representing Verizon Wireless as their radio frequency design engineer.
And if you could just make sure the light's on on your microphone?
Thank you. It is now, yeah. Thanks.
Mr. Peterson, let's take a couple of moments to qualify you for purposes of tonight's proceeding. What is your profession?
I'm a radio frequency engineer.
Okay. And can you provide the Board with the benefit of your education and experience?
Sure. I have undergraduate and graduate degrees, both in electrical engineering, both from Lehigh University, Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering, and Masters of Engineering, Electrical Engineering, a professional engineer registered in New Jersey, as well as a handful of other states. I've testified hundreds of times before municipal bodies like this, as well as in state court and federal court as an expert witness.
Mr. Chairman, I offer Mr. Peterson an expert witness in the field of radio frequency engineering.
We'll accept him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, let's take a couple of moments to set forth for the record what you've done in preparation for your testimony this evening, and understanding that you'll be testifying only as to radio frequency matters and electromagnetic fields. Are you familiar with at least that portion of the site plan that, as it relates to the radio frequency design?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And you're familiar with the details of Verizon Wireless's existing coverage in the area surrounding that of the subject property, correct?
I am, yes.
And have you had the opportunity to visit the site?
Yes, I have.
And have you had the opportunity to review the respective review reports that were just articulated by Ms. Tally?
I have.
Okay. And you are the author of the, I don't, I didn't catch the exact exhibit number, but for purposes of the record, you are the author and preparer of the reports dated by, from DB Engineering dated June 24th and July 1st, 2024, correct?
Correct.
Okay. For the benefit of the record, although I'm sure, or I'm making an assumption that most people on the Board are familiar with who Verizon Wireless is, let's just take a couple of brief moments to understand who Verizon Wireless is from a licensing or regulatory perspective. They are licensed by the FCC to provide wireless communication services to this market area. Is that correct?
They are.
Okay. And when we, and when I say that they are licensed, they are in fact licensed in accordance with the question that may have been presented, they are licensed at various frequency bands, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And just for purposes of the record, what would the general frequency, what are the frequency bands that they are licensed at?
So they're licensed in the cellular band, which was the original licenses that were auctioned by the FCC. That's 850 megahertz. Then there was the PCS band. They're also licensed there. That's 1900 megahertz. Then came along the advanced wireless system band, AWS band. That's 2100 megahertz paired with 1700 megahertz for uplink and downlink. And then the 700 megahertz band, they're also licensed in. More recently, they've acquired some license in the 28 gigahertz band, which you may have referred to, or have heard those referred to as millimeter wave, commonly used for the small cells and OAS nodes for 5G. And then most recently, they've acquired some licenses in what is referred to as the C-band, 3700 megahertz. And they are also deploying 5G services in the C-band, and that's being contemplated for this facility.
Now, just by way of some history, at one point in time going back five years or more, there was one single, what we call small cell node located at the property, as you understand it?
That's correct.
And that had to be ultimately decommissioned as a result in part of this redevelopment project, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And that, what I'll call OAS node, outdoor DAS system node, no longer exists, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Now, calling your attention to the June 24th, 2024 report, that report, as I understand it, was prepared for the purposes of determining whether Verizon Wireless had a specific need for a wireless communication facility at the subject property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And hopefully, without me, at least in the short term, interrupting you, can you take us through that report and help us understand why there is a need for the wireless communication facility at the subject property, and perhaps in doing so, respond to one of the questions as it relates to the specific frequency bands that would or would not be utilized at the property?
Sure. So at a high level, Verizon Wireless is seeking to provide improved service here. So service has two components. We need to have adequate coverage, so that's how many bars are on your phone. And then they also have to have adequate capacity. And the capacity is the ability to deal with the demand of the subscribers even during times of peak usage. So this facility is mainly geared towards the second part, that capacity part. This, as I'm sure you all are very well aware, this is a pretty dense area. There's a lot of residential. There's a lot of commercial use. There's this brand-new development there and in the surrounding areas. So there's a lot of demand here. And for a number of years now, really, at least a couple of years, that demand has been outstripping the available resources at times of peak usage. And we do have some charts that illustrate that, that we can look at if anyone wants to. But basically, during the morning rush, during the evening rush, during lunch hours, times where folks are using their devices, there is a shortage of radio resources for everyone to access the Verizon Wireless network at the same time. We've all had this experience where you're at a concert, let's say, or a ballgame, and you know you have plenty of coverage, but the wheel spins on your device. You can't receive that text or send a picture or download a business attachment or whatever you happen to be doing. And that's a symptom of really overloaded site or sites that are serving the area. And that's what we have here. So if we fast-forward to Page 3 of the report, what we have there is called a best server plot, and that's what's being displayed on the easel to my left and identically on the overhead. And also in the report on Page 3, you'll notice that where-
Excuse me, we have this report that he's referring to? Which one does it look like?
It was A7.
And what does it look like?
You'll see the DBM Engineering logo on it. It looks like it was received August 27th, 2024, so there'll be a stamp received.
That's Janice's. Do you have it?
So not in the paper packets?
Not in the paper packets, yeah.
Not in the paper packets. Right, we don't have it. Not in the paper packets. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, this is a good interruption.
Yeah. I mean, you look at it- I mean, you look at it online, but-
Yes. Right, but if you don't, yeah. We've had the issue the other way around.
Yeah, so, yeah, it was not included in the packets, it went out. But it is available. It was uploaded to the website.
But we can't follow along with you. Is it up there? Is it on the screen?
Do you have the report available electronically?
I don't have the, I don't think it's on the overhead, and it'd be pretty tough to read, I think.
I can get it if you want it.
I think it would be helpful for the board, I mean, I don't know how else we proceed if the board doesn't have all the information.
And Mr. Peterson, while Ms. Tally is doing that, the thing that's on the chart next to that, is that a reproduction of page three of that report? Is that what that is?
It's a reproduction of a portion of page three, yeah. Yeah, there's a map on page three, there's a map on page four, and those are reproduced in these larger exhibits.
Mr. Schneider, why don't we mark that, then, as a separate exhibit as A thirteen, please?
So we don't have the advantage here of having looked at that report until tonight?
Right.
Which is kind of a detriment.
So I guess that raises the question, I mean, do you all think you can adequately describe the contents of the report?
Yes.
Would you prefer to adjourn to another night, where board members have had a chance to review the report?
I think we can run through it. I'll go off script and maybe take a little more time to run through the report, but I think we can do it, and then if you have any concerns at the end, we can, we can address them.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, no guarantees, of course, you know, so if the board's comfortable with that at the end, that they've gotten enough information, then great. If not, you know, why have you come back for another night?
We just don't know what we're comfortable with.
Correct.
Because, you know, not having looked at it, it's very difficult to digest some of this stuff.
Let's see how far we can get, and then we'll make a decision after that.
I don't know if you want to, you can scroll through the report as you discuss.
Yeah, I will, I will try to do that. Okay, let's take a-
And do we have the, Ms. Tally, do we have the handheld mic over there as well? Okay, great. In case you want to get up and-
Sure.
Work from there.
Mr. Peterson, let me, let me try to address those questions. Let me take a step back. Why don't you start, and I'm going to try to follow the report, so the fact that you don't have the physical copy may be less significant. Let's take a step back. I'm going to refer you to page two of the report, but we don't need to necessarily reference the report. Why don't you take a moment to explain for the board, both historically and otherwise, what are the concerns and the origin and the historical treatment of network capacity, and how that generally comes into play for a facility like this?
Sure. So on page two of the report, and maybe I should jump up there so I can flip through a bit. This may be difficult to see, but I will do my best to narrate. So we're looking at page two now of the report, which talks about network capacity in general, and really what are global trends in network data usage, global mobile network data traffic between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty eight, as predicted by Ericsson. Those that don't know, Ericsson is one of the largest, if not the largest, infrastructure, wireless, radio and infrastructure manufacturer worldwide. So they keep a watchful eye on anticipated growth, actual growth. And in a nutshell, the illustration predicts a threefold increase in global mobile network traffic in the five years between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty eight. This is really just an extension of what's been going on since about two thousand and seven with the advent of the iPhone, and then the other smartphones that followed along. We've seen this exponential growth in data usage for the most part. And data usage means so much and so many different things these days with all the use cases that continue to evolve. And now what they are predicting will continue to drive growth is highlighted in the purple section of this chart, which is fixed wireless access. And what fixed wireless is, is that the providers now, the Verizon Wirelesss of the world, are, they are allowing their subscribers to replace their internet service provider. So the fiber optic cable that comes into your home or place of business, traditionally the coaxial cable before that DSL line, that internet service provider that was coming in on a hard line is now, they are now able to replace that with an over-the-air solution that they call fixed wireless access device, that can access over the airwaves using some of these bigger channels, the 5G channels that have a whole lot of bandwidth. That can act as the internet service provider, and then that signal can be distributed by your local, your local area network, your Wi-Fi network in your home, or your local area network at your place of business. So that's going to be a driver in the years to come, and that's from the perspective of an Ericsson, and also from the wireless providers there, they are anticipating that.
And Andy, let me, let me take a step back. In the broader context, for each particular wireless communication facility, there's only a certain amount of data, for want of a better expression, that can be essentially supported through each particular cell site, correct?
That's right. And that goes back to some of the licensing that I talked about, when we had the original eight hundred fifty megahertz cellular licenses, we were only doing voice. And at that point, you know, we're talking about the late, mid to late eighties. Anyone who had a cellular device had a bag phone or a car kit. Cellular facilities were few and far between. Typically, they were located on the local mountaintop or hill, and we would build them as tall as we could, and they would cover as much area as we could. And the phones had a lot of power and could talk over a great distance back to those, back to those cellular facilities. And now things have matured a great deal since then. The facilities are now much shorter, we like to use rooftops, we like to use less noticeable type of existing infrastructure, amount the antennas on, and that's what we're doing here.
So essentially, though, each site has a limited amount of, for want of a better expression, capacity in order to address the coverage objectives, correct?
Right. And that's kind of where I was going, I think I got sidetracked there. But each one of those channels, eight hundred fifty megahertz, the PCS, the AWS, the licensed bands that I mentioned, they can support a finite amount of ones and zeros over the air, data, voice, whatever that traffic is. So Verizon and the other providers, they have participated in all of the auctions for more airwaves, and over the years have accumulated spectrum or channels in a multitude of bands that I meant, that I went through earlier, and are continuing to do so, because with each acquisition of more spectrum, each one of their site becomes able to support more capacity. However, it's a very long process from acquiring more spectrum to clearing, the FCC then has to clear the incumbent out of that spectrum, whether it's TV or whoever was there prior, they clear the spectrum. The, the equipment manufacturers have to gear up the new radio equipment in those channels, and then the providers have to deploy it, and they have to deploy it across hundreds and hundreds of sites in each market, to the tune of thousands of sites nationwide, or tens of thousands, or many more. So that is a very long process, a decades-long process, really, for that to happen. So in the meantime, when we have facilities that are running out, or groups of facilities or areas like this, that are running out of ability to deal with demand, we need to add new, new facilities. And that's what we, we have here. We're adding a new facility to offload capacity from the surrounding sites.
And that segues, Mr. Peterson, I think, to the top of page three, if you would?
Yes.
So segues exactly what you were saying. And on the top of page three, and I'm going to go through the report as best as I can, at least as to the relevant aspects of this application, the top of page three, if you could just scroll up just a little bit, there you go, that, as I understand it, represents the surrounding sites which have essentially, or contribute to the need for this wireless communication facility, because their essentially capacity has been exceeded. Is that a fair statement?
That's right. Those are the Verizon Wireless existing sites that surround the area, that are currently providing service for the area, and because there is this demand that's overrunning their resources, they are, many of the sets of antennas on those sites are beyond the capacity that they can, they can handle and provide adequate service for.
And located on-
One quick thing to the board, if any board members can't see and want to move closer, feel free to do so.
And on the top of page three, Mr. Peterson, that's a description of the surrounding sites which directly impact the need for this particular facility. You indicate the structure type, the height of the antenna, and the street address of each of those respective four sites, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So can I ask a question? So is what you're doing on the Seymour Street building, is it replacing this, or is it just adding to it?
We're going to add to it. These sites are going to remain on the air.
They'll remain there? Do you upgrade their equipment at all?
Those sites are already upgraded.
Oh, they're upgraded to the max?
Right, with, with the latest technologies and the latest frequency bands. We always leverage the existing assets in an area before adding a new site. It's faster to market, it's cheaper, et cetera.
Let me follow, because you stole my next question. Is there, is there, in order to ultimately address the capacity issues that you've identified, is there anything that you can do relative to the existing sites, relative to modifying them in any way, which would eliminate the need for this site?
No, there's not.
Okay. Go ahead, I interrupted you.
No, that's fine. So beyond the information on the surrounding sites, I talk about the sectors that are, or sectors or group of antennas that are at their capacity limits. And those are highlighted in the report, generally speaking, with this area of this black ring. And I'm going to attempt to switch back now, because this is the, yes, this is the same-
The same figure, just without the black oval on it?
Yeah, and this may be a little easier to see. I've blown it up now, kind of knocked it off the screen a little bit. This is identical to what's on the easel here. And I think this is really what bears the most explanation, and, but I think will also give the board the best idea of what exactly is going on. So I'll spend a couple of minutes here. We have the, the location of the proposed facility is indicated most central to the exhibit. It's called Montclair Willow, that's just the, the internal Verizon Wireless name. And then we have the surrounding facilities that are on the air. They're indicated similarly with these target-shaped icons. This one's called Lower Montclair. This one's the Montclair DPW. This is the Glen Ridge site. And then there's a much more modest installation down here called Pine and Bloomfield. These are all rooftops, rooftop installations, with the exception of the DPW site, which is a stealth smokestack. So in the area surrounding the proposed facility, that was roughly highlighted with that black ring, we have a great deal of demand that's not being currently met, and it's putting, if I, well, I'll back up a little bit, to kind of explain what's going on with this patchwork of colors. These facilities are split into what we call sectors, which are sets of antennas. It can be two antennas, three, four antennas, depending on exactly what's, you know, the specifics of the design of the site. But generally speaking, each site has three sectors. Each one of those sectors is comprised of a set of antennas, and those antennas are highly directional. If you can picture a Maglite flashlight, where you can adjust that, the beam, you can do some beam forming by twisting the lens and creating more distance or less distance between the actual flat, the light and the, and the mirror behind it. These antennas act in much the same way, only on a much more complicated scale, and using some of that beam forming, they can create very specific shapes for the beams, for the antenna pattern. And that's what we see here. And just by way of example, if we look at the Glen Ridge site, there is a westerly-facing set of antennas. It is providing for this aqua area of best server coverage. So what that means is in these, in the geography with this aqua shading, the westerly-facing set of antennas on this rooftop, they are providing that signal, and it is the strongest signal in that area. So it is likely that a Verizon Wireless subscriber in any part of this aqua-shaded area will be served by that set of antennas. Similarly, that site has a northwest, or, sorry, northeasterly-facing sector in brown, and then a southeasterly-facing dark brown sector with a set of antennas, and Verizon Wireless subscribers in those areas will be served by those sets of antennas. The site to the west has a southeasterly-facing sector providing this blue-shaded area, and the site to the north has a southerly-facing sector that is providing for this green-shaded area. Those are the three areas, or three sets of antennas or sectors that are currently being overburdened by the traffic that's, that's causing the demand in the area surrounding the proposed site. So it's this aqua area, this blue area, and this green area that we are seeking to offload with the new site.
So there, in a summary in that regard, there are particular sectors from each of the surrounding sites which would presently provide coverage to this area, and it's those sectors which are being, for want of a better expression, overloaded or having capacity issues, which creates the need for this particular site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
So flipping to the next page of the report, and what's really the important part of that is the next map here, which shows the new best server, should the facility be constructed and activated as planned. This is all done through propagation modeling, so we can look at different what-if scenarios with new sites. We can arrange the antennas in different ways. The radio frequency design engineers, this is a big part of their job, and a big part of my job is to see what arrangement works best, where do we position the antennas specifically on the roof to get the, the coverage and capacity we need. So that's what we're showing here. This is the, the proposed configuration with the addition of the, the new facility, which, which has three new sectors of sites, or three new antennas, I'm sorry, three new sectors of antennas, one northeasterly-facing, one southeasterly-facing, and one generally westerly or northwesterly-facing, that will provide these three new geographical areas of best server coverage, which will serve to offload the light blue, this dark blue, and the green areas that we were looking at earlier.
Sorry, can you just point to the three new areas again, specifically?
Sure. So there's this area of, I'll call it brown to the northeast, greenish-yellow to the southeast, and then this darker green to the west. After a certain amount of sites and sectors, you start to run out of really distinguishable colors, so apologize for that. But, yeah, so that, this geography in its entirety is the area of new best server coverage, so Verizon Wireless subscribers in any part of that, you know, this entire geography, will now be served by the new site. And the, the sets of antennas, the sectors of the surrounding sites that previously had to cover those areas, will now have those- had to, uh, cover those areas, uh, will now have those resources, those capacity resources back, um, to better serve the areas that are close to them. So, if we look at the, uh, the, uh, light blue facility that was previously covering a whole lot of area here, and now is only responsible, if you will, uh, for, for maybe half of that area or so, um, gets a lot of its resources back to better serve the folks that are still in the light blue areas. So, there's this ripple effect of, not only are we providing better coverage and capacity, better service for the folks that are in the immediate footprint, but then the next level of cells that we're alleviating, um, they also, that the subscribers that remain on those, um, will now have improved service by virtue of the new site.
And that will satisfy, that will help the servers that are overburdened, I thought, um, I'm sorry, the, um, the towers that are overburdened? This, this will alleviate that? Because I think you said there were three that were essentially, um, overburdened by usage.
Four.
Four that were overburdened.
Right. The, this, uh, blue sector to the west will be alleviated, um, most notably, that blue sector to the west, the, the light blue to the east, and the, uh, green sector to the north. Now, there are little pieces of some of the other patchwork of colors that will also have areas alleviated, um, and each one of those will benefit by having more of their resources back.
Okay. Because it looks like a lot of it's picking up the Glen Ridge, uh, uh, site, but, uh, you're saying it will also impact those other sites as well, correct?
It will, yeah. And, and the other thing that's important to note is, this is really, you know, we have the existing sites, we turn on the new site in the propagation modeling tool. What happens is during the, the integration and optimization stage, once this facility is built, we can do some fine tuning. There's some, some, you know, th- this is the big knob of adding the site, and then there's some smaller knobs that we can adjust. Um, we can, we can change azimuth a little bit, you know, where, where the antennas point. Um, we can change down tilt a little bit. Um, we can do some power adjustments. That way, we can, the, the goal is to balance the, to balance the load on each one of these sectors, make sure each one is doing their fair share of heavy lifting. That's better, you know, that's the, the, the optimal configuration. So, there's that whole optimization piece that happens. So, this is kind of a rough look at, at where the best server areas are going to be.
Okay.
That makes sense? Yes, sir.
Is this all Verizon or do you subcontract out to other providers?
This is, this is strictly a Verizon site.
So, other carriers have the same map?
Is your, is your microphone on, Mr. Neiman? Then, other carriers must have similar maps all over town. So, so what we're looking at is not necessarily the effect of these frequencies or whatever in town. This is just one aspect of it.
This is just for Verizon Wireless.
Just for Verizon.
Yeah, their network and, and seeking to improve their network.
Just curious, yep.
Sure.
When you analyze demand and capacity, what was the time period that you looked at that? And how do they compare to best practice?
We do have some charts that I'll, that I'll take a look at, and, and then we do actually even have some refresh charts that are on my, on my boards, but the report has some, has some charts that are a bit dated now. I think the, the report's from June, so it was maybe eighteen months prior to that. And now, we've got those, uh, last six months or so included. Um, so, so we'll have a look at that.
Why don't we, you want to go to that right now?
Yeah, sure.
Can I just ask a question? Did you explore other sites besides the Seymour Street building?
Well, we needed something, you know, in this area. I think originally, we were on the, uh, the East Building, and then the-
Oh, in Seymour Complex.
Right. Well, we were looking at that, and then, um, the, the property owner directed us to this, and that's kind of not my bag exactly as to why that all happened, but another witness could probably address it.
Let, let me just clarify, it wasn't necessarily the property owner. The original site was on the, commonly referred to as the East Parcel, and then, as, and Janice can certainly articulate it, the, the, the request was for us to relocate to the West Parcel.
Excuse me. What is the range in terms of distance that this site will be serving?
Um, it's really about a half mile or so, um, maybe a little less even. Um, and that's pretty common in an area like this. If we look at a really dense area, let's say, if we talk about like New York City, um, providers have, uh, sites usually every block or two. Um, so, it, a- as the population density increases, uh, the density of sites increases commensurately. So, if we talk about a real rural area, we might have a site every two miles, three miles, and that can support the demand in a rural area. But, but an area like this where there's, there's some pretty dense use, we need, uh, we need sites, um, about this density is, is typical for, for an area like this.
Thank you.
Sure.
How, how do I experience the capacity problem? What happens to me and my phone if, if there's overcapacity?
Well, regardless of who your provider is, um, it's, the, the first symptoms are going to be heavy data usage applications. If you're someone who does a lot of video streaming, um, or FaceTime calling, or, um, you know, apps that are using, um, a lot of video streaming. So, you'll see buffering, you'll see things slowing down. If you watch, you know, ESPN, if you're following the game on your phone, you'll see the, the pixelation, um, and I think, you know, if, if, if it were to stop and end there, we would probably, everyone would say, well, it's inconvenient, but I can, you know, I can make a phone call, um, I don't need to FaceTime, you know, from here or whatever. But, um, the problem is, as demand continues to grow, um, times when, when that becomes an issue, um, they start to become more frequent until it gets to this chronic state of exhaustion on the sector where, uh, voice calls are blocked, um, emergency calls can be blocked, uh, things of that nature that are really mission-critical applications for wireless service.
So, is it a matter of time before even this, this group of antennas that you want to put in are going to become, uh, the, subject to overcapacity as well? So, you're going to need additional locations?
That's a question I get often, and, um, I wish I had a, a clear answer, but I don't have a crystal ball. It really depends on what happens in this area as far as if there's future development. I mean, thi- this solution will fix the current problem. Um, but in five years, in ten years, if, if there's, uh, another redevelopment nearby, if there's, um, uh, the next Pokemon Go app that comes out, just to throw out a wild example, but, um, as, as data usage continues to grow, um, as an industry, we try to keep up with it with acquiring new spectrum, um, rolling out new technologies. Um, the reason, you know, we go from 3G to 4G and 4G to 5G and so on, um, with each iteration of technology, um, the, the, uh, system becomes more spectrally efficient. We can push and pull more ones and zeros in the same amount of bandwidth, um, but there is that finite component where we, we, uh, at a certain point, we can't keep up. Um, so, the, the short answer is for now, this, this will address the foreseeable future. Um, however, five years, ten years down the road, there may be some other solutions that are needed, depending on, you know, a lot of different things.
Sorry, just to follow up on that question. Did you take into account that we have a major development in the works at Lackawanna Plaza, which is a hop, skip, and jump away from Seymour Street?
I don't, I, I'm not familiar with that, but the Verizon Wireless traffic folks who, who do this kind of planning, who are looking at this thing, you know, looking at things like that, uh, with a microscope, they, they would have, they, they would be aware of that, um, hopefully, and, and would be planning for that. But, you know, to, to that point, this, that's exactly why we need facilities like this, uh, to, to bolster the, the capacity, uh, capability in the area.
Yeah, but this is something that's known. You know, it's a known plan that's been approved and has commercial space, it has a supermarket, has residential area, and it would behoove you to take that into account, I would imagine.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that is with respect to, uh, this site.
I can't, I can't see that.
It's towards the edge of the green and the brown, as Bloomfield Avenue, so, yeah.
It's probably less than a quarter of a mile away.
Oh, the, other, like, south, south.
So, here, this area?
Nope, north-south.
One of the streets.
Near the Glen Ridge site.
It's actually near the Pine Street site.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Bloomfield Avenue.
So, so down here?
There, like, on that border of the green and the brown. There you go.
Okay. Yeah, so, so this site will do a, a lot for that area.
Could be this area.
Yeah. We'll, we'll have this new sector, uh, the southeasterly sector, a set of antennas of this site will serve that area. So, if we weren't doing this, you know, it'd be, it would be, obviously would be, uh, that much more of a strain on the existing, the existing sites. I don't know what else, um, I, I can't say that I, that I know specifically, um, or knew specifically that that was going in.
But there is a specific sector from the proposed facility which would be essentially oriented in that direction, correct?
Right. The southeasterly sector is oriented almost directly at that area.
I've got, Mr. Campbell, next.
Yeah, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Uh, can you describe what makes this, uh, proposal optimal versus, say, upgrading the existing towers?
Well, the existing towers are upgraded, if you will. They're, so it's, it's cheaper, faster to market, um, for a whole lot of reasons. Verizon Wireless always leverages the existing sites that they have out there. Um, so, all the surrounding sites already have C-band 5G on them, which is, uh-
Got it.
-the, the latest, uh, widest channel that can, that, that is most spectrally efficient, can, can provide the most additional capacity. Um, we wouldn't be looking at a new, you know, the proposal of a new site unless all the surrounding sites were already leveraged to their maximum.
Okay. And later on, we'll get to the, to the quant data that sort of takes a look at the demand versus the capacity and how long we've been exceeding.
I have those charts.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get there later.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 I was, I'm going to flip to that momentarily. Yep.
Mr. Neiman, next.
What's the anticipated service life, life of a facility such as this?
Uh, well, there are, uh, tower sites that have been on the air since the, the eighties that are, that are still on the air. Um, they're, they are upgraded as new technologies become available, antennas are swapped out. Um, but as far as a service life, I don't, I don't know that there's an expiration, you know, as long as this, this remains the viable wireless communication, um, infrastructure, I would anticipate th- this facility, um, being on the air.
And so, as they, as wireless providers transition to a lot of small cell facilities as well, would this continue operating the same way? Would it, it, it would be upgraded to different bandwidths? Like, how does it play with that?
So, the small cells, uh, they work in conjunction with these types of sites. Um, imagine the, uh, the, the, uh, the lighting in this room and then, you know, a little lamp over in the corner providing some, some local, uh, capacity in a corner. That's kind of the, the small cell analogy. Um, we don't need to dim the lamps for the, for the, the small cells to be effective. We don't really, uh, typically change a whole lot with the configuration when there are small cells that are placed through an area. Um, they're just a, a different kind of tool in the toolbox to provide that, that capacity. But their, their coverage area is, is really limited when we talk about, when we compare them to, to macro sites where a small cell is, um, usually covering an area on the order of hundreds of feet, um, thousand feet at, at, really at the upper end, um, and it's usually only going to cover, um, outdoors. They have, uh, just by virtue of their, their limited stature, line of sight to the surrounding areas, um, and limited power output, uh, they don't do well covering inside. So, um, they have their place, um, as far as a capacity augmentation, but they don't, um, they're not a replacement for a site like this.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just to follow up on that. So, if you do, if this were installed, do you still need the small cell?
So, there, there is a, there was a small cell here, um, that was decommissioned in 2019.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But would we anticipate that we'll be getting applications for, for small cell wireless facilities if you have this capacity spread out?
I don't know of any in the works here, um, but to the question that was asked earlier, in five years, in ten years, if, you know, if, if there is added, increased demand that we can't address with upgrades in technology or further auctions of, of bands, it's not unthinkable. Um, I, I don't want to say it's, I, I can't guarantee that, that won't be the case, but I, I don't know of any at the moment.
Just one more question, sorry. Um, do you kind of, when you're, when you go on to the next level of distribution, or I'll call it, whatever, um, do you, do you take down the old equipment? Like you said, there was a tower that used to be on a hilltop. Would you remove the tower?
It's very rare that we decommission sites.
Oh, you still use it?
Yeah, in this case, we had to decommission that small cell, the, the ODS node that was here, uh, because of the redevelopment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's very, very rare, um, that sites are decommissioned. Sometimes they're lowered, um, in, in, in some instances.
Yep, okay.
But, yeah, I, I'm familiar with only a handful of, in, you know, my thirty years of doing this, that have been decommissioned, and it was for some very kind of one-off-type reasons, uh, maintenance reasons, or, um, a building being constructed right in front of the site, things like that, that don't happen very often. Sure.
Maybe we can address, Mr. Campbell, um, I'm going to, Andy, refer you maybe to page fi- oh, you're there. Page five of the report?
Yeah, so this is, well, these are the updated. The report has some, some dated, uh, exhibits. Oops.
So, should we mark these as well?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it, it seems like we have a PowerPoint deck is, is what we're showing over here, along with-
Yeah, that's identical to what's here.
That's identical to what's being shown, okay.
So, I can mark these A-13, A-14?
Or do you want to just mark the, keep the same marking, would just note that it's a whole deck instead of just one?
A-13 will be the, 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 these coverage maps, is that what we're called?
Coverage maps and then some, uh, data trending, some usage trending.
Yeah, okay. It's four, is it four sheets?
Yeah, there are four sheets, yep.
So, let's say all four sheets are A-13.
Okay, great.
Uh, so what we're showing here, and I'll flip back and forth a little, um, this is the usage trending for, uh, two of the sectors that are going to be offloaded, the Glen Ri- the Glen Ridge westerly-facing sector, which was the light blue area here, and I'll go back to, and then the Lower Montclair southeasterly-facing sector, which was the blue here. So, these are the two sectors that are going to be most, uh, offloaded by the proposed site. Um, and just to explain the chart, um, the dates are a bit hard to read, but it runs from, uh, roughly May of 2023, um, to, uh, I think these were pulled in November, end of, even end of November-ish, uh, of this year. So, pretty current, uh, maybe mid-November. And, um, what we have on here is, uh, in red, um, what I'll call a soft ceiling. Uh, what I mean by that is, um, demand, uh, will often exceed that and is met occasionally with these spikes. You can see that the actual usage in blue, um, is the, uh, is, is the, um, the, the actual, uh, throughput. So, this is, this is data usage, um, specifically on the downlink. So, this is data going from the cellular facility to all the devices, um, and that actual data is in blue. Um, beyond the red, anytime we see the, the blue eclipsing the red, um, we have that, the, the symptoms of congestion. Um, and then the-
Looks like there's a clear trend line there.
Right, and that, that is the, the, uh, the yellow is the extrapolated trend line that the Verizon, uh, traffic group supplies. Um, so, you, you can see that there is spiking above the, the red occasionally, um, but anytime we're kind of hovering around that red area, uh, that, that's basically the system being maxed out where, um, users are experiencing congestion. Now, it's important to note that this is the third busiest hour of each day. So, it's not the busiest hour, it's not even the second busiest, it's the third busiest. So, um, this isn't to say that in the middle of the night, there's congestion issues, um, at two, three in the morning, but certainly, uh, during the morning rush, during the evening rush, um, wherever, um, or whenever in a certain area of the most demand, and that can vary, um, a college campus versus, uh, kind of a center-city area can have a very different, uh, busy hour or set of busy hours. Um, but there are at least three hours of the day where, where, um, each of these sectors is, is, uh, showing usage that's going to, um, have folks who use the system experiencing those symptoms of congestion.
And that's when you experience the, the issues that council, um, asked you about, correct?
Correct, right, right. Correct, right, right. So that's the
And this is well after the decommissioning of the old tower? You said that was, or the
Right.
Cell site was in 2019, right?
Right, that was 2019.
All of this trend, all the trends that we're looking at here are well past that.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and that was a single ODS node, as far as the capacity that that, the capacity offload that that can supply, it's very limited compared to what we're proposing.
The report that we have online, the report that we have online, the trends look the same, but the data looks different. It looks like a different report. Like that, you can see the, I don't think it matters a whole lot, I mean, we believe that use is going up.
Yeah, this is a refreshed set.
Oh, it's a refreshment of that.
Yeah, I think, I think in the report it ends in the summer. So they probably, you know, you could probably line them up, oh, I'm looking at the wrong board.
What we did in that regard was we wanted to update it as of essentially November to provide you with the most up-to-date data from the time of the report. The report is dated June.
Right.
Do you have a perspective on what percent of the time the system is at or above capacity? Because I can't see the raw data, I could make an assessment from the trend, is it 80% of the time, 90%? It seems like it's low, as like a proportion of the total, but
Well, it's, what we're displaying is the third busiest hour.
Yes.
So there's, you know, at least three out of the 24 hours that we're at this state or worse.
It's directional, the data.
Right, it's, it is, it's trending upward. Is that, when you say directional, is that what you mean?
Obviously, we have a ceiling, which is represented by the red line.
Correct, yeah.
And then there are blue spikes that pop above the red line. So my curiosity is around what percentage of that blue dataset is above the red line? Like, is it 10% of the time that we're exceeding capacity? Like, I'm trying to get a perspective on how great is the problem?
I think I understand what you, so what happens is, the network and this, this sector specifically will start to throttle people
Okay.
to keep everyone's experience adequate. So that's why we see a lot of, the trending is kind of hovering around that red line.
So it's forced, it's suppressed?
Right, there's some, there's some throttling there, if you will, that, so everyone can still, let's say, access their data services, it just kind of slows down for everyone, and that's where we have the experience that we talked about earlier, so.
So at what point in the system is there sort of like the parameter that forces or suppresses the amount of demand that's coming through?
Well, it's really this soft ceiling.
Got it.
Yeah, there's predisposition by the network in each, each one of the sectors of each sites to say, you know, we want to keep everyone's experience as much as they can.
So that is our barometer, the red line, whether it's suppressed or not, like our
Right.
Okay.
Right, when we're hovering around that red line, you're having, you're having issues.
Okay.
Is it, it's, you know, it's kind of like a mediocre service, yeah, where your texts go through eventually, but it's not a great, you know, it's not the service that we all come to expect.
I appreciate that. So maybe we can take that as a follow-up, I'm just curious, like, if we could understand what percent of the time we're actually popping above the ceiling, even if it's soft, I think that it's relevant, and then also from a customer perspective, because we're describing what sounds like a, I'm unclear whether it's a customer problem or a business problem. So are we saying that customers are raising their hand and they are saying that they can't make calls, that they can't get on Netflix, that they can't stream, or is that we are saying that there's a business problem? Two are different?
Right, there's certainly a customer complaint component.
Okay.
The Verizon Wireless ways, I don't know the specifics in this case.
Okay.
As much as possible, they try to plan for the future, they don't want to be kind of in this situation, where they're, they're now, you know, for at least three hours of every day, pretty much, we're now providing a less than adequate service to subscribers. So this project's been going on now for a number of years, and you can see that, you know, we're now in this state of almost chronic exhaustion, at least for three hours of each day. So we want to get this, you know, we want to get this solution in place.
So going back to what I said, what's in our packet, or I'm sorry, what's online is the most recent one, and this is an older version?
This is more
This is, this is said, what we have online says June.
Right, so I think that that, yeah, the one that was online was, was a little older. Right, that data there ends in June of 2024. This goes through mid-last month.
This is three months after that.
Three months after, okay.
Mr. Nieman.
Is there a standard that is going to spur Verizon to decide it needs to introduce a new location, or, like, one day of being over capacity is not going to tell Verizon it needs a new facility? Is there some standard that says if a facility is overburdened for X period of time per day or over the course of a month, or whatever it is, that says we need a new facility?
Yeah, well, they look at the trending. There's a group within Verizon Wireless, they have a traffic group, and they monitor the trending, and they're, they're forward-looking. I don't know the specifics, you know, if, I couldn't tell you it takes X amount of projected days per month or per year, or, that is probably a proprietary thing that Verizon may not share publicly, but, but they certainly look at the trending, and they, they don't want to be in this situation.
And the new sites will alleviate this problem, we'll see those, the blue fall below the red?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the other chart that is displaying, you know, a similar illustration is for the southeasterly facing sector of the site that's to the west, so.
I may have missed it in the pack.
This one.
Is, is there an anticipated, a visual showing the anticipated where that capacity line would be with the new facility online?
No, no, I don't think Verizon, I've never seen that. I don't know that the traffic group does that, so no, I don't have that, certainly.
Just curious, is a hospital a more intense user of data than other types of things?
Oh, I mean, a lot of hospitals will have their own, their own network for their internal data usage, you know, for, you know, obviously for sharing medical files and things like that, that's way out of my wheelhouse, but I do know that oftentimes they have their own wireless networks, Wi-Fi network and a local area network, but the folks that are at the hospital are certainly using their devices. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I know the answer to that.
Just curious, thank you.
And just to clarify, so the new facilities will only impact these two sites, Glen Ridge and Lower Montclair, or also Pine and, what was it, Pine and Bloomfield, I think it was?
No, the DPW site to the north.
So that we will reduce that burden up there as well, for all of these sites, you're saying?
Yes, yep.
Okay, because again, it just does seem like it's concentrated really on that Glen Ridge site, but I, I will take your word for it.
Yeah, there is an awful lot that's offloading the area that's covered by Glen Ridge, but as I mentioned earlier, we'll do some post-integration optimization to try to balance the load. And obviously, the population isn't spread exactly homogeneously, we'll have to, you know, that comes into play.
Thank you.
Andy, let me, I know certain board members don't have the benefit of the report, is there anything else with respect to the report itself that you wish to address in your testimony here this evening? I have a couple of follow-up questions, but I just want to
I'm just kind of scanning through it now. There is, there is a, we might as well take a look at it, just, if we talk about just pure coverage, now, I did, I did say earlier, this is, this is mainly a capacity solution, it's going to offload the sectors that are in need of offload, but if we look at this site, just what it does from a coverage perspective, where the signal is going to travel, this map displays the facility on the air by itself, so nothing else is on the air now. And we're showing green areas where it will provide strong enough signal to penetrate glass and steel building, an office-type building, and then yellow areas where the signal is strong enough to provide service in a vehicle, and it'll, it'll stretch out to the areas where the other sites are, so. This is part of, I think it was A-17 or A-13, I forget.
13.
13, yeah, so that was the end of that.
So the difference between what's shown is, green is in-building coverage versus yellow, which would be outdoor coverage, correct?
Yellow is in-car.
In-car, okay.
Yeah, in-car, so the, there's some industry standard attenuation factors that we apply to penetrating a vehicle versus penetrating a, you know, a dense type of building, and that's what's accounting for the smaller footprint.
The point being that in order to achieve the coverage objectives within the building, you need the stronger signal strength.
You need a stronger signal strength, so the footprint of that will naturally be smaller.
Right, and that is, just by way of some historical perspective, that's been one of the major transformations for the 30 or 40 years that me and you have been doing this, that when, when we did those sites in 1990, those were all just in-car or outdoor coverage, and now the focus is more within the building, is that correct?
That's right, yeah, subscribers, in the late eighties, they just wanted to be able to use their car phone. A lot's changed since then, so we're, you know, we are seeking to provide service to the subscriber regardless of their surroundings.
I don't want to give short trip, is there anything else further within that report? Because I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Yeah, there are, there's just a couple highlights I'll touch on, just so folks get the full breadth of the report here. There's, there's a, there's something called wireless substitution, this phenomenon of folks replacing their landlines with cellular devices, and it's increasing roughly 3% every year across many of these metrics, but in a nutshell, in the second half of 2022, almost 73% of adults nationwide and almost 82% of children lived in wireless-only households. Certain sub-demographics have higher percentages, as you would expect, folks renting their homes, folks that are younger tend to have higher percentages, folks 30 to 34, almost 89%, I'm sorry, yeah, 89%, and renting their homes, 85%. So as this trend continues to spread and increase, having strong in-building service and adequate capacity becomes more and more important. The other thing of note, 70% of 911 calls now originate from mobile devices, so if an individual is hurt so badly they can't speak, or are unfamiliar with their surroundings, or are witnessing an accident in, you know, unfamiliar territory, they can call the, they can call 911, and through geolocation, the dispatch center can, can get the help that they need or someone they have witnessed needs to the proper location. Again, that's only possible if there's adequate service, coverage and capacity. That's really it, I think, on the report.
Let me, let me ask a follow-up question. Ms. Tally, in her review memorandum raised one radio frequency question, and that is, and let me take a step back, because we may not have covered it in a lot of detail. This, this site is designed into three sectors of four, correct?
Three sectors.
Correct.
Yes.
When I say four, four antennas on each, on each sector, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and those are commonly referred to as the alpha, the beta, and the gamma sector, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. One of the questions was whether two of the sectors could be relocated to the stair penthouse at the higher elevation rather than in its, in its current configuration, correct? You understood that question?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Can you address that inquiry and explain for the board why you could not relocate those two sectors as per Ms. Tally's suggestion?
Sure, and I'll try to use this as a visual aid.
Let me, for purposes of the record, let me make sure I quoted, "The applicant should consider installing the antennas on the stairwell penthouse, which has a height of 87.5 feet, and would eliminate the one variance that I referenced." You, me and you had a lengthy discussion about whether that recommendation can be addressed, and so I'll ask you to do that.
Right, so the, the southeasterly facing sector of antennas, that is currently proposed to be mounted on the penthouse there, and the reason for that is, is that penthouse is on the southern side of the building. So we can mount the antennas there, they have unfettered line of sight to the surrounding geography, there's, there's no issue doing that. But if we were to locate the other two sectors on that penthouse, their line of sight is blocked dramatically by the rooftop, by our rooftop itself. So you have this rooftop that's, you know, if you can imagine the geometry, you're only up, now, these are six-foot-long antennas, you're only up a few feet from the rooftop itself, and you're looking to provide signal out beyond that rooftop, and that rooftop is, I'm guesstimating here, but, but 50, 100 feet, something, I'm sure we can get that number, but really, at, at any significant length, you know, whether it's 20 or 30 feet, it becomes an obstruction to not only the line of sight from the antenna to the surrounding areas, but also to that pattern forming. When I talked a little bit about how these antennas work, they need clear space in front of them just to form their pattern. Otherwise, you know, if the pattern doesn't form, then we don't get the coverage that we need. So for those two really good reasons, number one, you know, the line of sight is blocked, and number two, we need that space to form the pattern. What's common with these types of facilities was when you look around, now, we do a good job as an industry, steffing the antennas, and back to, I think, the question earlier, you had mentioned some of the equipment is on the side of the building. That's, that's the antennas and the steffing of those antennas. And, and what's common with these sites is you will see the antennas usually from the ground, or you'll see some, if you know what you're looking for, you can sometimes pick out the steffing that's hiding these antennas, although I think this site does a great job, and I'd be hard-pressed to find them when it's, when it's all said and done, but that's because we need that line of sight from those antennas to the surrounding geography. So if we have these antennas tucked back on the penthouse with the rooftop in between, you wouldn't be able to see them from the ground, and that's not a good thing from a performance perspective.
Let me just, let me just follow up, because we didn't get into it, we'll get into it a little more with the next witness, but we are designing this with some concealment over the antennas, correct?
Right.
Which, I think, creates a very nice design here, but strictly from a radio frequency perspective, that's, that's RF, for want of a better expression, that's RF transparent material so that the signal can get through that concealment and still provide that coverage, notwithstanding this concealment, correct?
Right, the concealments are fiberglass-like material, so it's RF invisible or RF-friendly, it doesn't attenuate the signal, it's not like we're putting brick or some type of metal in front of the antenna, doesn't affect that pattern. But from an aesthetic perspective, it makes the site look a whole lot nicer, and I think the site, we'll see, the visuals is really indistinguishable.
I would imagine the answer is very similar to the one, the previous one, but why not just lower it one foot?
Do you mean the
The facility that needs to be one foot above the parapet?
Yeah, I was going, yeah.
So there's a one-foot deviation, let's put aside whether that's, there's any adverse aesthetic consequences as a result. Me and you had a discussion about whether we could lower it one foot to eliminate the deviation. Did you look at it, and is the one-foot deviation a function of using a certain type of antennas which provides for some better coverage?
Yes, what's being proposed here are six-foot antennas. The industry has moved to longer antennas, you know, we talk about the eighties and the nineties, we were using four-foot antennas. We, of course, we cared about the antenna pattern, but it wasn't as critical as it is now with 4G and now 5G to have a really tight horizontal pattern where we keep a lot of that energy basically directed toward the horizon with a little bit of down tilt. The longer the antenna, the better we are able to control that pattern and make adjustments to that pattern, and in this case, a six-foot antenna package is being proposed. to that pattern, and in this case, a six-foot antenna package is being proposed as opposed to a four-footer or something smaller, for that very reason. To get the performance we need out of this site has to be the six-foot antenna pattern, which necessitates, because the windows below and then the parapet above necessitates that one-foot deviation.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, let me.
Counselor Lockman has a question.
Yeah, I just have a question. See how much I know about this. Do these make any noises?
The antennas, no.
So just, well, does something else make noises? You said the antennas.
The equipment on the rooftop.
Yeah.
Will have some, there may be some, almost like the sound of a computer fan running, but nothing, nothing that would constitute a nuisance.
And there is, there is no generator being proposed by the applicant in this case, as often the case on other sites?
Because it's pretty close to, there's an apartment building right next door to where, the corner where you intend to sight some of these, so that's why I was curious.
Yeah, the antennas, the antennas themselves generate no noise.
But the other thing makes a buzzing sound, like a fan.
Well, almost like a computer fan, so certainly, you know, it's located on the rooftop, away from the edge of the roof, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be audible to any of the nearby buildings.
Okay, thank you.
May I continue, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, unless there's any questions from the board, any more questions, I should say.
I just have some further testimony with this witness.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, let me switch gears if I can for a second.
Sure.
I think we've spent a healthy discussion on the need for the site, but let me just conclude your testimony. You're also the author of a report dated July 1, 2024, and that report was prepared for the specific and limited purposes of confirming that the site will operate in very strict compliance with FCC guidelines as to electric-magnetic fields, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and in preparing that report, you used the required FCC methodology to confirm whether the levels of radio frequency emissions are in strict compliance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and in doing so, you used essentially a series of worst-case scenario assumptions, correct?
That's right.
Okay, and with the understanding that the FCC permits up to, for laypeople like me, up to 100% in order to be in compliance, what would the levels of electromagnetic fields be for this particular site?
So for this site, the levels would be less than 1% at all areas of public access. Simulation revealed exposure levels would be less than 0.14% of the applicable FCC standard at all locations of public access, so this would be a compliant facility by a wide margin, and that's typical with these types of sites.
Okay, so just in, in final lay terms, 100% is the max permitted by the FCC, and we're at 0.14%, correct?
Correct.
Using the required FCC methodology and assuming all of the requisite frequency bands are used, et cetera, et cetera, correct?
Correct.
Do we say public access? Is that outdoors? We say public access, does that mean outdoors, does that constitute?
Yes.
Yeah, we were speaking earlier about the need to penetrate the buildings, so how does the perspective change, if at all?
So whenever you have any building material.
Yeah.
It attenuates the signal significantly, 90% or so. So that's about a 10 dB, well, it is a 10 dB reduction in power, so it's significant. So when we analyze these types of facilities, we're generally, generally looking at areas where there is not building material between the antennas and, let's say, a passerby.
Does the FCC?
As far as the worst case.
Thank you for that. Does the FCC give guidance on how we might measure the signal indoors? So we say that we are less, it sounds like, less than 1%?
Yes.
Outdoors, so indoor, is there an equivalent measurement that we might think through as we, sorry, go ahead.
I'm trying to understand the question.
Got it, so it seems that we're, as we're thinking about health, safety, public concern, we're talking through public access, meanwhile, we're in a heavily concentrated downtown area where there are literally schools, like, at two Seymour Plazas, so I'm trying to understand how we think about health, safety, as it relates to FCC regulation in the report that's being shared here.
And it's on an office building, so people will be in that facility where these antennas are located.
There's a nursery school right across the street, yeah.
Yeah, the, as I mentioned, there's significant attenuation from building material, and when we talk about the office building itself, that these, you know, these antennas are being mounted on, there's very little energy that's directed downward, you know, directly downward or to the rear of the antennas. So even in the uppermost floors where the antennas may be pretty close, there'd be very little energy that would be directed that way. They're highly directional panel-style antennas, they direct the majority of the energy outward toward the horizon.
Okay, and you said it's very minimal equipment on the roof, so none of that equipment would have any electromagnetic?
Yeah, the equipment itself doesn't generate electromagnetic.
Doesn't generate any?
Doesn't, yeah, no, no more than, you know, the, no significant electromagnetic energy from the equipment, it's the antennas that are, that are propagating the energy.
And as you said, only in the direction that they're pointing, or primarily in the direction?
Primarily in the direction that they're pointing, mainly toward the horizon with a little bit of down tilt, so we've got, you know, most of that energy passing above the surrounding buildings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, so once those are installed, are they adjusted at all? So like, you take numbers now, but could they be adjusted where the frequency might increase, or is it static?
Well, what we do in a report like this is we make, we make several worst-case assumptions, including 24/7, 365 maximum power, 100% ground reflection. We, for the analysis where we're talking about the outdoor areas, you know, areas of public access, we ignore any attenuation from a building material or environmental clutter. So when we build this worst-case scenario, that would account for, let's say, if we tilted the antenna a little bit this way or that way in the optimization process, if there are additional radio resources added to the facility.
Yeah.
Verizon Wireless has an internal program in place where they rerun the reports like this whenever a site is touched.
Right. Do we have a user agreement, then, with Verizon that would allow our engineers to go and check this, if we want to do a random check on this?
No, because this is on private property, there's no, you don't have a user agreement.
Oh, okay.
Unless you, unless you had another response for Counselor Lockman.
Well, I guess the only other comment I would add is the FCC does audit Verizon Wireless on this particular aspect of these facilities. They, they will audit their report files, they'll go out to sites to make sure that they're properly, the signage that's required there, if any, is there, things of that nature.
On a random basis, or annually, or every?
I don't, I don't know exactly how it, how it works, I know there's a random component to it, I know that they don't look at every site every year, but that's, you know, one safeguard that I think is worth mentioning.
Thank you.
Mr. Neiman?
Obviously, there's going to be a lot of data going in and out of this facility. Is the infrastructure to accommodate that already in place, or are you going to have to be digging trenches to put in wiring and?
I'll have my next witness do that.
Sure. Thanks.
So in terms of electromagnetic exposure, you said it was, what, 0.14%?
Correct.
Is what the calculations were for the public rights away, right? And that's based on how many antennas?
That's based on the 12 that are currently proposed, with the radios that are currently proposed and the bands that I had mentioned earlier.
Okay, so it looked like your report mentioned six antennas, well, I should say nine antennas. So if I'm looking on page two of your July 1 of this year report, it says Verizon Wireless plans to install six new panel-style antennas at antenna centerline height of 77 feet 1 inch above grade, and three new panel-style antennas at antenna centerline height of 82 feet 4 inches above grade.
So I think the permitting that we're seeking is for up to 12, and the actual design is, the reason there's six and then three is because of the two heights, one of the sectors being a little bit higher on that penthouse, and then the six that are being attached to the side of the building at 77 feet. But I believe that they're seeking permitting for up to 12. But this, this paragraph would reflect what's currently in the radio frequency design, which would be installation of nine. So I think I'm.
So how does that change your numbers, then? You know, if you're, if you're coming here seeking 12, and you're telling us the calculations for nine, how does that change your analysis?
Well, the, so, I mean, I know it kind of sounds counterintuitive, but it's really the radios that dictate the electromagnetic exposure. Now, the energy from the radios is going through the antennas, the antennas are passive elements, they add gain, you know, they, they shape the antenna pattern, so that adds gain, but whether we pipe the radios through 12, or nine, or three, the 4G antennas here are all the same model, so if we had another one that we were piping through, we would still have the same gain, so it wouldn't affect the, the outcome that the, that the modeling would yield, so long as the radio configuration that is reflected in the radio frequency design sheet, which is basically the blueprints for the RF, from the RF perspective, that's what's being reflected in this report. So that, that reflects nine antennas. I think the permitting is for 12, and maybe that's, I'd have to take a look at the drawings, I don't have them handy.
If I, I can clarify that, I'm looking at the drawings. It shows three regular antennas, and then the fourth one's a different design, so it's four antennas, but the fourth antenna is narrower. I don't know how you distinguish between the three larger antennas and the one smaller antenna, and how that comports to the RF analysis.
It could be also that one is a spare, that is also done sometimes, where they'll put the fourth up there. What's reflected here is what's, is what the radio frequency, frequency design sheet.
It says four antennas plus two, all right, four antennas, but they all, they're not the same antennas, plus two RH units and one OVP unit.
So those aren't antennas, the RH units, those are the remote radiohead, they're basically the radios that sit behind the antennas, and the OVP is overvoltage protection unit.
Okay.
Those are not antennas, per se.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, it could be that the drawings are reflecting a spare, that, I'd have to take a look at the, do you have the drawings?
So it says four antennas, but they don't look alike.
Yeah, I agree with that, I read 12 antennas total, and I was wondering, you know, since it said three, or, sorry, nine antennas, how does that affect things? So what, so what would drive, I mean, is there a scenario? I'll let you confer.
Yes, it just shows three.
So let me ask you this again, if, if, on the basis of that there's four antennas perspective, would the 0.14% number in any way materially change?
No. No, it wouldn't.
So essentially, if the radiohead, you said RH is radiohead?
Remote radiohead is an RH.
RH, so as long as that unit stays the same, you could broadcast through, I'll say broadcast, I'm going to use layman's terms, you could broadcast through one antenna or 10 antenna, it's the same electromagnetic field that is generated?
What's being proposed here in the drawings is, we're showing three antennas, well, three antennas of one size, which are the LTE antennas, the 4G antennas, then we show a smaller one, which is the 5G antennas. Verizon's radio frequency design sheet shows only two of those, and that fourth one as a spare or not shown on the radio frequency design sheet. So the way things are going to be piped, if you will, are all those remote radioheads, they are going to connect through two antennas. The 5G smaller antenna has an internal radio, so it's kind, it's a, it's a more modern iteration of technology. The, the fourth antenna per sector that is shown here, you know, in the drawings, with the current radio frequency design, will be dormant. I don't know if they're putting it up for a spare, I don't know if they're just, because this is kind of like a stealth installation, they probably don't want to have to install it if they need it down the line, you know, with the steffing there, I'm not really, I'm not sure why the mismatch, but the radio frequency design sheet only shows the use of two. Now, to answer your question directly, if they decided to take some of those outputs from the radio and plug them into that fourth, it wouldn't yield any different output here. The antennas are the same model, the three that are the same size are the same model. The radios only have four output ports per channel, we can plug them all into one of the antennas, or we can, we can mix and match, which they do that occasionally, but only across two antennas. So based on the drawings and the radio frequency design sheet, there will be a dormant antenna here.
Mr. Peterson, what's the radio frequency design sheet? Do we have that?
No, it's an internal Verizon Wireless document that shows, someone like me, exactly how the plumbing, for lack of a better term, works between the antennas and the radios. It's really, it's an in-depth technical document that I've reviewed and used for this report.
But that's different from what we're, from what we're, what's being approved tonight. What's being approved tonight is the application for four antennas.
Right, and I believe that's what Verizon plans to install. I'm looking to see if there's.
I mean, the application does plainly say installation of 12 antennas.
Right, I do believe that's what Verizon plans to install, but what I'm saying is one of those will be dormant, one per sector.
But you can't guarantee, you're saying one of those will be dormant, but, you know, two years from now, they may decide to install that fourth one, so they're applying for what will be four antennas per sector.
Correct.
Regardless of, one may be dormant right now, we're presuming that there'll be four active antennas at some, because that's what, that's what's being proposed, right? That's what, that's what, what's being built can support.
Right, they're proposing four antennas per sector.
So would the installation of four antennas per sector in any way change the substance of your July 1 report?
No.
Is there any way to add any additional radioheads without coming back here first? I think that's the issue, right? It's not necessarily antennas.
If they came in, what this is for is for four antennas.
Right.
So if they wanted to strip out that dormant one and put a new antenna in, they can do that.
No, understood, but I think what I'm hearing, and I'm a layman, but what I'm hearing is it's the radioheads that we need to be concerned about when it comes to electromagnetic energy, correct?
Correct.
So the number of radioheads that are being proposed now, you cannot increase the number of radioheads without coming back here? Is that correct? Because that's?
I'm not sure that's the case.
That's not the case?
I don't think so.
Because isn't that what we're concerned about?
We don't.
That's one of the, I think the remote radiohead is one of the pieces of equipment that's going on the roof itself?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, the remote radiohead.
Yeah.
Where is that located?
They are located with the antennas.
They're located with the antennas.
Yeah, behind or very close to.
Is it one-to-one, one radiohead per one antenna?
I'm actually looking at the drawings, that can sometimes change exactly where they're, where they're located.
In other applications, we've, we've limited the size of the antennas, the number of antennas, the location of the antennas, but in the other approvals, we've never limited or identified the number of radioheads, that's something different, that's why I said that.
I see, and, but that's where you can increase the electromagnetic energy.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, Verizon does have, you know, they do have an internal failsafe for that, where failsafe for that, where wherever they, whenever they touch a site like this, they're going to run their internal report, and I do those frequently for them.
What do you mean by that?
So they have, they have an internal group that is focused on electromagnetic safety. So whenever they add, let's say a great example, when they added C-band 5G to a lot of their sites, each one of those sites that was touched was evaluated from electromagnetic exposure standpoint.
But if we approve these, but if we approve these antennas, Verizon is just doing that review on its own without further board approval? Is that correct?
We have the right under federal law to modify the facility without board approval, subject to always being in compliance with FCC standards. And we are, just to put it in some perspective, we're at 0.14 percent. I mean, that's infinitesimal less than 1% of the FCC.
Sure, now, right, I understand that. We don't know the changes in technology, as we've said, there's increase in demand, increase in app usage over the years. So I just want to understand our level of protection as a board for the municipality.
Well, if the board is concerned, we might be able to require them, when they add new radioheads or change that, that they would require a building permit, they'd have to go to our building department, get a building permit, get a copy of the report, you know, that you would have to submit that with the RF report to show that it's still, even with the, with the change. It wouldn't come back to the board, but they-
But as long as there's some kind of protection for the public.
They were submitting the report for those changes.
Right.
I think that that would be reasonable.
I'm still trying to figure out the relationship, one to one, the radiohead to antenna. How many is, how many radioheads are going to be expected to be in this array?
So in each sector, there'll be two. The radioheads have evolved, and each one can now handle two bands. So what we'll have here is a low-band radiohead that's doing the 700 megahertz and the 850 megahertz, and then a mid-band radiohead that'll do the PCS and the AWS, which is the 1900 and the 2100 megahertz. And typically, how Verizon plums them to, I guess, because we're at that level of detail, is they will plum the four outputs from the mid-band radiohead for the 1900 to one antenna, the four to the, from the 2100 to one antenna. So we have those two antennas that have the two midbands. And this is a lot of detail that I wouldn't normally, but, you know, so I'll try to keep it as high levels possible, but, so you have the two mid-band radioheads, well, two antennas from one radiohead. I should, so one radiohead midband has, doing two frequencies, one here and one here, and then the low band, they'll actually take two outputs from the 700 and put it on this antenna, take 200, or 2, 700 from the same radiohead and put it on the other antenna, and then do the same with the 850. That's the usual plumbing. So that, the fact that there's this third antenna, and I'm intimately familiar with a lot of their different permutations, and right now, this is what they're, this is the current design that they're doing. And it's changed over the years and may continue to change, but right now, this is, so my expectation here, and it makes sense that it was not on the RFDS, the radio frequency design sheet, is that, that is a spare antenna that's being installed.
So to accommodate what Ms. Tally has suggested as methodology, to stay on top of what it is that Verizon is doing, what are you, what would we be monitoring? What would you have to come to the building department whenever Verizon wanted to change something out, whether it's the radiohead, or the antennas, or what have you? What is it that will give life to what Ms. Tally has said is a reasonable approach?
I think the building permit process, there should be a requirement, if, this is what I'm hearing, and I don't want to put words in, you know, in the mouth of anyone on the board, but there should be a requirement with any building permit that there be an electromagnetic emissions analysis supplied that contemplates whatever the proposed change is at that time. That demonstrates compliance.
So whenever there is to be a change to any of the, any facet of this antenna, or just the radiohead?
Actually, I have a, I mean, we don't, you don't have the number of radioheads in this set of plans, right?
They are called out.
I wouldn't be able to call that out as a layman. So perhaps when you come in for your building permit, even your first building permit, you provide, if it's either this RF safety, RF safety analysis, or an amended one that matches the number of radioheads that you're applying for. Okay.
That's fine.
Because this, I'm not sure that, does the RF analysis that was permitted, submitted with this application, that may differ from what you're actually applying for.
That's fine. Why don't we deal with it this way? We'll submit an updated EMF report which matches the actual number of radioheads and related appurtenances as set forth on the building permit. How about that?
That's, I think that's fine.
Okay, you can-
I'll work with you on writing it.
I'll work with him on writing it.
Okay.
Mr. Neiman.
That would be my easiest job.
Just a quick question, obviously, you're at 0.14 percent of FCC acceptable limits. Does Verizon have an internal limit that it finds to be a cutoff point on unacceptable emissions?
No, the FCC has sole jurisdiction on-
I understand, like, a legal limit, but like internally, do they set a different standard than the FCC?
No. No, it's the FCC standard. There's an occupational standard, there's a public standard. The public standard is what's being used here, it's five times more stringent than the occupational standard. That's the only separate standard.
Gotcha.
But what we're looking at here is the most stringent of standards.
So the number could have come back at 5% or 10%, and Verizon would not have used that as a reason to change their plans?
Anything below 100% is compliant with the FCC's guidelines. Does that answer the question?
Not quite, and I think I understand why, but if the report had come back and said in a public location, it was at 10%, that would be in compliance with the FCC standards.
Correct.
But would Verizon find that acceptable?
Yes, that would be fine. I mean, anything below 100% is, our burden is to demonstrate compliance. So that would demonstrate compliance.
And they would go through with a project that had an emissions rate of 10%, or rate may not have been the right word, but the measurement was 10%. They'd go forward with that plan?
Yes.
Okay.
I think what Jake is asking is, is that a red flag if there's a jump up in the emissions of any given project? Does that create any kind of red flag in terms of-
For Verizon, yeah.
For Verizon.
The answer's no.
Okay. Thank you.
Compliance is compliance, I guess is the, you know, if it's a compliant design, it's a compliant design, whether it's 0.14 or 10%.
Thank you.
Sure. Counselor.
It's a quick question, yeah, yeah. So there's not many people from the public in the audience tonight. Was the 200-foot radius notice given to everybody who owns, yeah, but nothing was said to, that's a highly residential area full of tenants? But tenants were not told about this hearing, or?
No.
No, you're in compliance, I know.
Or this property owner's within 200 feet.
Yeah, and that's it. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes, I just follow on to Jake's point. Just curious if the analysis contemplates prolonged low-level exposure inside buildings? And again, my curiosity is really around the nurseries, daycare, schools, like young children, obviously developing bodies, very different than us in this room, how the analysis contemplates that?
So the analysis is conducted in strict accordance with the FCC guidelines, and those guidelines do take into account more susceptible segments of the population.
Okay.
The greater surface area to mass, so in the elderly and children, you have more surface area to body mass, the specific absorption of energy could be greater in those instances, but the standards take in those segments of the population into account.
Got it. In the public right of way, which would be outside.
Yeah, the standards are based on, and there's, the report talks about this, but they stem from the specific absorption rate, so how efficiently the human body absorbs energy in the specific bands. And for that reason, the exposure limits vary by band. The lower the band, the more efficient the body, so that-
It'd be helpful for you to explain all that, because just remember, some board members don't have your report.
Right, yeah, this is in the electromagnetic exposure report.
Correct.
And the, there is a paragraph on page three that talks about the FCC limits on which they are based or derived from exposure criteria, quantified in terms of specific absorption rate. Basis for these limits is a whole-body specific absorption rate of four watts per kilogram as average over the entire mass of the body. So without going into much more details than that, that is accounting for more potentially susceptible segments of the population.
And so if the population was biased more towards a susceptible portion, like it's over-indexing on the elderly or the young, then we might evaluate this a little bit differently.
What is typical, and I don't, I don't know exactly how, you know, what weight was given to the segments of pop, I don't know that level of detail, but what is typically done is these, and what the FCC historically does, and how my report is also formulated, is just to assume the worst case. To set that minimum standard at the standard that would be acceptable for an elderly individual or a young person. But I don't know the exact percentage that that is weighted towards.
Understood. Thank you.
I have a question for you, just, you know, we're a planning board, and we're reviewing sort of the health aspects, or, you know, I'm kind of uncomfortable in a way, because it's sort of out of our, so in very simplistic terms, if the agency that regulates you is the FCC, can't they just issue a letter, say, we studied this, it's okay? I mean, or just something that's very simple, that, I'm just thinking about boards like us all over the place, listening to this, and it sounds great, I feel like we're taking some sort of responsibility that is not necessarily a planning issue.
Right, and if I can, there's a very simple answer to that, and your question is right on point. The clear purpose of why the FCC adopted the standard and what the law says is, they don't want you to be, no, respectfully, they don't want you to be the arbiter or the determiner of what's healthy or not. The law is expressly clear that planning boards, boards of adjustment, shouldn't be the agency who's required to make a decision about whether it's safe, not safe, whether you, the sole obligation of the carrier is to demonstrate compliance with the FCC standard. And once, by a recognized expert, compliance is established, that frankly ends, respectfully, and I think it's a good thing, your obligation. We demonstrate compliance, that's the end of the planning board or zoning board's function. And the reason for that is, is I think, if you think about it, makes sense, you shouldn't have to be the defender of the FCC standard, or whatever the case may be, or to say to the public, it is or it isn't safe. That's beyond, that's beyond what you should be responsible for. So what the FCC has said, and the case law is clear, counsel can confirm this for me, the FCC has made it clear, once we demonstrate compliance, that's the end of your responsibility. It's not for you, no matter how you personally feel, it's not for you to make the arbiter decision about whether it is or isn't an adverse health effect. Because if that was the case, then every planning board in the 500-some-odd municipalities or boards of adjustment in the state of New Jersey, times 52 states, would be having differing decisions about whether it is or isn't safe. So the sole obligation of the applicant is to say, we comply with the FCC standard. And once we demonstrate compliance, that ends the inquiry. Now, that being said, the reason, to be honest, why we even bother presenting the testimony in the report, is to frankly, to give you a level of comfort level here, that we're talking about not, apropos to your comment, we're not at levels of 97.9% versus 100. We're at a level giving the worst-case scenario, and dealing with your questions about attenuation, we're talking about levels of 0.1, less than 1% of the FCC standard using the worst-case scenario. So it's a comfort level. But essentially, in summary, we demonstrate compliance, that ends your obligation to address the matter.
But it's also the board's prerogative to inquire about how those calculations were performed, any assumptions that went into it, so I just want to-
Absolutely. And that's why I'm saying, to the extent that there is some question about whether, which you picked up on, whether the report reflects nine versus 12, we'll amend the report as a condition of hopeful approval, that the EMF report would conform to the actual design as reflected in the building permit application, to address your concerns that if there was, if we added an, as part of the building permit, an RRH, will reflect the report, will have that reflected in the report.
Terrific. I just want to make sure Verizon remains in compliance. If it does become 97.8%, we should know about it.
And you should know, right. Absolutely.
Yeah.
And in terms of the calculation, you know, where is the public in this calculation? Is it the street outside? When you, when you do that calculation, how do you figure out where the public is?
Well, the level that we're quoting there, the 0.14, is street level, outside, no attenuation from any building material between the antennas and those individuals.
So kind of like the nearest point on the street that a person in the public could be to any one of these groups of antenna?
Right, and it's even, I know you don't have benefit of the report, but the report on page six shows where that maximum value would be found, and it's basically just in front of the antenna at ground level.
What about, what about buildings to the south? You know, what about a maintenance worker that's on the roof? How does this calculation apply to them? I know it's not the public or public access, per se, but could you give us some insight, you know, if there's a maintenance worker right next door?
Yeah, I mean, there are rooftops to the south.
Right.
There's kind of rooftops around there. We have benefit of height here overlooking those rooftops, and like I said, the antennas, they focus that energy kind of in this pattern that's pretty tight in the horizon. So the vast majority of that energy is passing overhead, folks on, at street level, even folks on neighboring rooftops that are lower. So I don't have the calculation here in front of me for X rooftop or Y rooftop, but that is something that's considered in Verizon's internal program, and would be displayed on their internal program, that is kind of looking more holistically at the surrounding area, not just for the relative, not just for the maximum point.
But the maintenance worker next door wouldn't necessarily have access to that to, right, to understand, just for their own comfort, am I at 1% or am I at 50% of what this permissible exposure is?
No, they wouldn't. I mean, they wouldn't have access to that report, right, but-
Is that something you can include in this updated EMF analysis?
Yeah, yeah, if we want to, you know, if we want a closer look at the surrounding rooftops to see what the levels are there.
I think it'd be helpful for the public, if somebody had, you know, a question, they could say, okay, saw this building permit come up, you know, and I just want to know what's going in there, and here's this EMF analysis that looks at the nearest public exposure, but also the nearest, you know, maintenance worker rooftop exposures.
I'm just taking some notes, sorry, continue.
No, please do. Other questions from the board? Or actually, I don't know if you had more questions, Mr. Schneider, or not?
Not, not for this witness.
Okay, so no more questions from the board? Are there any questions from members of the public for this witness? Are there any questions from members of the public for this witness? Okay, I see none. You've got two more witnesses?
Yes.
Okay. Can we take a 10-minute break?
Certainly.
Great, let's do that. Thanks. Ms. Talia, are we back on the record?
Yes, we are.
Excellent. Okay, so we're going to pause this application while we go through our calendar for 2025 because I have a feeling you're going to come back and we need our calendar approved in order to give you a date to continue this. Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to our 2025 meeting calendar.
Okay. We have, we distributed the calendar. We have two questions. One, are the dates acceptable? And number two, we discussed changing the start time from 7:30 PM to 7 o'clock PM.
I had a couple of questions on the dates. And we'll get, let's do dates first.
Okay.
It looks like we, like several of the months, we've moved to the first and the third Mondays. It says second and fourth.
If it was, it was to address holidays.
Holidays, okay.
Yeah, we had to-
Because it seems like there's a lot that are moved.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of Monday holidays.
Okay. And it looked like, let's see. We've got Rosh Hashanah, I think, starts on September 22, which is one of our meeting dates.
I know we looked into that. You know, I had her, I had my staff look at all the-
Okay, and I could be, I could be wrong on that, but again, this is Googling things and just making sure we're covering folks.
2025. Oh, I just- It's evening of Monday, September 22 to Wednesday, September 24. So we have to, I, for now, let's just take off September 22.
Okay. And then I think December 15 is the second night of Hanukkah?
Well, we didn't, because for Hanukkah, seven nights, we didn't, we still kept it eight? Oh, okay. Sorry.
So we normally don't necessarily schedule around Hanukkah and we'll make individual-
Right.
-decisions based on what's on that day?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can, unless anybody has an objection, we can keep the second meeting at the month. And if we don't need it, we can cancel it.
Okay.
Any objections?
Any other questions from the board? We haven't, we haven't touched on timing. That's just the dates. So any other date questions or concerns? Okay, let's get to the time.
Yeah, as the person who suggested this, I think we have some late nights. I know there were prior concerns about folks getting in in time for the 7:30 meeting. But we've had a lot of changeover in the board's membership since then. And so I thought it was a conversation worth bringing back up. I think it just gives us more time to be clear-headed and wide awake. And so I think it'd be a good move.
Well, yeah, I mean, it did, so far in my two weeks into my new job, the latest I've gotten home is 6:30. So it, you know, which was two hours of commuting. But seven should be okay. And look, if I'm late, you know, we have an excellent vice chair here that-
Thank you, Chair.
-we'll just have to run the meeting if I'm running, running late. Everyone good with seven?
I like to keep it 7:30, but just go with the majority.
Well, that's what I was thinking. I don't want to be a problem, but, you know, I prefer 7:30, but I don't know that seven is, if that's what everybody else wants, I don't think I want to fight it.
Yeah, me personally, I'm like, I'm leery of seven, but I'm willing to give it a shot. Although I think if we do go to seven, I think we should change the bylaws to say we don't generally take new witnesses after 10. We, you know, of course, can change that. And we can say, "Let's have a late night." But I think at least it gives us a little bit more discretion to say, "Hey, we started early." You know, again, somebody remarked, I think, towards the end of the meeting last time, "No good decisions are made after 11 PM" or something like that. So it at least gives us that discretion to say, "No, we're after 10, let's stop." So that would be my recommendation if we do go to a 7 PM start.
I would have no issue with that.
Should we take a vote on the 7 o'clock start?
Yeah, yes.
All right. So there's a motion to change the meeting time from 7:30 to 7.
Motion to change the meeting time from 7:30 to 7.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Abstentions.
Obstain.
If it becomes an issue, we can always move it back to 7:30. So maybe we keep the bylaws for now and see how this goes, you think?
I'd like to change the bylaws.
Yeah, I was going to say, now, motion to change the bylaws.
Can we change the bylaws?
Of course.
Right away? Okay. I don't know if we needed to notice. Well, then I would move to change the bylaws to the section that references a 10:30 general stop time for new witnesses to say 10 PM.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, it's done.
I don't know if that was an abstention by Ms. Wallace.
No, I don't, I don't think that's worthy of abstention.
Okay, so we're set. Do you need a vote on the dates as well? Or we've all agreed on the dates and we're good to go?
All right, let's take a, kind of give them, get a motion to approve the calendar as amended for next year.
Motion to approve the calendar as amended for next year.
What's happening to the one that we're coming back on, that September 22? So it's everything except-
September 22 is crossed off from now.
We're just crossing it off.
No meeting.
Only one meeting. September's a tough month. So let's take, just remove that, okay? So we had a motion by Mr. Graham.
Seconded by the mayor.
Seconded by Mayor Baskerville. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
And then, just a quick question, because it CCs our legal notices. Does the township have a plan regarding the Star Ledger's ceasing of publication to address legal notices? address legal notices?
Well, I'm in, in conversation with the township clerk, and I know that she's in conversation, there's a lot of discussion at the state about allowing notices to be online.
Okay.
Has not been determined as of yet.
Thank you.
Is there going to be any printed newspaper in this region?
I don't think so. No Star, the Montclair Times is it. That's all we have as of February.
That's not good.
Not even the Montclair Times, it's the Hackensack Times, I think.
Yeah. So changes will be coming, I'm sure, in terms of, you know, online public notices.
Okay, that's our 2025 meeting calendar. Let's get back to the application. 2903 for One Seymour Plaza.
Just as information, just changes, I represent a couple of planning and zoning boards. I guess they are considering amending the statute to allow for, specifically to allow for publication, and not print by publication. The question is whether they're going to allow the newspapers to do it or allow it to be posted on a township website. I guess that's.
Right, that's to be determined. So for now, we'll keep it as it is.
I'd like to call, and I understand you have a cutoff. I will try to be brief and direct. Mr. Frank Colosserdo.
Sir, do you solemnly swear the testimony, swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you please state your full name and business affiliations?
It's Frank Colosserdo. You spell that C-O-L as in Lou, A-S as in Sam, U-R-D as in Doggo.
Okay. Sorry, are you familiar, are, you're affiliated with a company?
I'm the hired architect. Verizon hires me to prepare their site plans and have approval of the construction drawings.
You're with Frank Colosserdo Architects?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
May I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Colosserdo, what is your profession?
I'm an architect, licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, and can you concisely provide the board with the benefit of your education and experience?
Sure. I graduated from New York Institute of Technology in 1990 with a bachelor's of architecture degree. I've been designing wireless communications facilities since around 1992. When I was licensed by the state of New Jersey in 1996, that's when I started testifying in front of Board of Adjustment and zoning boards with respect to wireless telecommunications. I've testified hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey and been accepted as a qualified witness.
Your license is still current?
Thanks. Just one thing, I forgot my.
Why don't we accept you as a witness first?
Why don't we accept it as a?
I forgot my hearing aid, so I'm not ignoring you. If I'm just staring at you with a blank face, I just didn't hear you.
Let me, I know we, it's late, Frank, so let me just take a couple moments, and I'm going to keep my voice up just in recognition. Frank, you've visited the site, correct?
That's correct.
And you're the preparer of the site plan that is before the board, correct?
Correct.
And you've reviewed the relevant provisions of the Seymour Street redevelopment plan as amended as it relates to this application, correct?
Correct.
And you've had the opportunity to review the DRC committee reports, as well as the HPC report, as well as the planning report of Ms. Tally, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you, on behalf of the applicant, had occasion during the time period when the redevelopment plan was amended to meet specifically with Ms. Tally and other representatives of the township during that process, correct?
Correct.
Okay. For purposes of the record, why don't, without me interrupting you, why don't you describe for purposes of the record, the building upon which the wireless communication facility is proposed?
So the building is located at One Seymour Plaza. We know it as the West Building, Montclair Willow Street West Building, Block 3106, Lot 1701. It's got approximately, it has over 400 feet of frontage on Seymour Avenue. It's a seven-story building. The first five stories are parking garage, the upper two stories are office. Verizon Wireless is proposing, took a shot to a wireless communications facility on this, on this building. It's total of three sectors. We identify them as Alpha, Beta, and Gamma. Each sector has four antennas, two RH units, and an OVP. The OVP is basically a surge protector. It's a small unit. It accepts hybrid cable on the bottom, and it pushes out coaxial cable on the top. And that's, the coaxial cable was what hooks into the antennas. We're proposing one radio cabinet on the top of the roof, supported by a structural steel platform. I don't know if this board has heard other applications. Usually, we're proposing four radio cabinets, two batteries, and two radios. In this particular case, we only need one because there's a Verizon switch in Montclair. So the majority of that equipment is going to be located back in the switch. The only equipment I need here on this rooftop is the ones that have to directly serve the antennas at a closer proximity. So this is a one cabinet installation for, for a macro site, which we refer to as a full macro site, which is unique. We're able to take advantage of that hub located in Montclair. The antennas themselves, you've heard testimony from the RF engineer that one is surface-mounted to the elevator penthouse, and the other two are surface-mounted to the facade. I'm going to call it the north facade of the penthouse. All the sectors are being concealed with a screen. That screen is made out of fiberglass, I'm sorry, is made out of styrofoam that sandwiched between fiberglass. The color, shape, pattern is going to mimic some of the architectural elements on the building. My planner, which I don't think you're going to hear tonight, he has some photo simulations. You might have seen him in your package of what that's going to look like. You can't see the antennas or the cabinet from the public right away. As far as the equipment goes, I'll give you a real quick facility summary. The facility is designed to be unmanned. That means there's no permanent employees as far as traffic it generates. A routine visit every once, once every four to six weeks, once the site is up around a technician, Verizon technician will come to the site in a Ford Explorer type of truck, park, go up to the rooftop, kick the tires, make sure the equipment's working and looking the way it should be, and then leave. So there's no traffic generated by this. There's no permanent employees. Not having permanent employees, but don't produce any sewage, don't need potable water, don't produce any solid waste. The equipment itself doesn't produce any odor, any smoke, any vibration, or any noise that would exceed the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's noise standards. We need an electric service, electric line, which we're getting from the existing building. It's already there. We're going to be putting a circuit breaker in an existing circuit breaker panel that happens to be backed up by a generator. So we have generator backup at the site. And we need a fiber line. There's a fiber service already at the building. So Verizon will extend the circuit to the D mark in the building, up to our radio cabinet. That's it. If you want to know anymore.
Questions from the board? Counselor?
Just where is the hub that you talked about?
I'm going to come closer because.
I'm sorry, where's the switch hub thing?
Where's, where's the Verizon switch?
Where's the, where's the Verizon switch?
Oh, the Verizon switch. You know what? I'm not really sure. I mean, I did the work inside of it. So these switches now becomes what we call hubs that help feed these macro sites. I can get you that address for the next meeting.
Isn't the Verizon?
You know, I do. I'm sorry.
It's the Verizon building on.
It is the Verizon building. If you know where the Verizon building is, that's the switch.
It's on Gates.
I also should mention, we're also proposing two GPS units. They're sized with a smoke detector. They're receive-only, they don't broadcast. They help this site synchronize itself with the other sites. And that also will be behind a concealed mobile system.
So the, the one sector that extends to the north, it's over the property line? Is there any sort of air rights or considerations by the adjoining property owner?
So there's two sectors that are on the north corner, right? There's the Alpha Sector and then the Gamma Sector. I'm sorry, what was your question?
So they're over the northern property line, correct?
One is, right? One is, that would be the Alpha Sector. That extends over.
Is there an agreement with the adjoining property owner to have to?
We're, we're in the process of finalizing that, and we have no issue if you make that as a condition of approval.
Okay.
Fair question. Actually, we're working on it today.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
This was, this is an agreement between Verizon and the adjacent building?
Correct. It's common owned, there's a common ownership.
Mr. Nees, is your mic on? I just wanted, thank you.
Yeah. But the purpose of the agreement, I was taking notes.
There's a technical air rights encroachment arguably over the property line, so we'll do that. And just so, so we're going to enter into an encroachment easement granting us the right to extend over the property line in the air.
And the relationship between Verizon and the building owner itself?
Is that of lessing.
So you actually have a lease?
Correct. We have a lease for an initial term of five years with four automatic options for a total term of 25 years pursuant to a fully executed site lease agreement.
Thank you.
So in terms of screening the antennas, are they screened all the way around, so front, top, bottom?
Yes. Well, not the bottom.
Not the bottom.
We have them on three sides, not the top, that's open to the air. I don't have anything on the bottom. This material that we use allows the signal to broadcast. It's styrofoam, two pieces of fiberglass. This system will probably be built with a series of angles and maybe fiberglass channels. It can't use metal because it impedes the signal. And then the way it's all put together is again with fiberglass screws and glue. So if I put a bottom on this, my concern would be is that it would fill up with snow, water, possibly ice, and just collapse and possibly hurt someone to be below. So I prefer not to put a bottom on this, this system.
So this, so they will be visible from the street, looking upwards?
If you're standing below it, you know, you'd have to be standing directly below.
Could you put a perforated panel on the, on the bottom? I mean, you probably didn't hear me. Can you put a perforated panel on the bottom?
You could, I'd still be concerned about over time, the perforation's getting clogged.
Right.
And then if that builds up with water with our weather here and turns into a block of ice, I don't think looking straight up if you're standing underneath is worth the risk of possibly hurting somebody. And that's probably my job as an architect, to protect the wealth and safety of the public.
How about, I have another suggestion. Could you put louvers?
I'm sorry?
Could you put louvers on the bottom to?
You could, I'd still have the same concern.
Okay.
I would.
Any other questions from the board?
I just, the material, the fiberglass compared to the, the building, it blends in nicely. How does it weather compared to the building's exterior materials? Because it's going to eventually, is it going to look different or is it going to maintain? Because it blends in very well according to the renderings. Will it continue to have the same appearance that? Seamless, that seamless appearance?
What'll happen is the, the company who makes this system, they'll come out, they'll photograph, they'll hopefully identify the paint color or this, in this case, it's going to be like a stainless steel, I believe. And they'll match it. And.
But I meant over time, so for the maintenance of it.
Over, over time, it has a tendency to fade. It's fiberglass, the sun. And I've had boards in the past making a condition of approval. If that happens, the applicant has to go and fix it.
If I may, in fact, the recommendation of the HPC.
That was one of mine, yes.
Was to ensure that the concealment continued during the life of, of the facility, to continue to match that of the building, and we have no objection to that condition.
Perfect. Thank you.
I, I forgot you.
Good to see.
But I remembered.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I see none.
Thank you.
Welcome. No problem.
Chairman, I guess in view of the 10:30 cutoff, we'll not proceed with our planner, or that's the direction, I guess you?
Yeah, because we still have other business that we need to get to tonight.
Okay. So then the question, I have two questions. One is, to what date we want to carry it to? And I guess at 7, whatever date that is. And then, just a, I don't want to say a personal question. Do you, is there a request to bring back either of the prior two witnesses?
There's, I, I mean, I would defer to the board if they want to hear them again. You never know what questions come up.
Okay.
So I, I think it would behoove you to bring them back.
Okay.
Just in case.
That, that's fine. I just wanted to know.
Oh, yeah, and also since, you know, some board members will read the report of the RF and EMF, so.
That's fine. So then the, the only question is, to what date we're carrying it to a date certain?
It would be January 6th. At 7 o'clock.
Just give me one second.
Of course.
Okay. So we're going to carry it for purposes of the record to January 6, 7 o'clock PM. No further notice required of the applicant, the applicant to the extent requires grants an extension of time through that date.
Yes.
Okay. Happy New Year. We'll see you January 6.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Same to you. Okay. Do we have any committee reports?
I, if I can ask if there's anybody who wants to volunteer for the Development Review Committee since Mr., oh, God.
Jacobson.
Jeff, Mr. Jacobson is stepping down from the, from the board?
When does it meet?
It meets the first Thursday of the month.
And who, who's on it now?
Me, Jeff, and Bill Harrison.
Okay.
From the zoning, zoning Board of Adjustment.
And Norberdo and myself.
Janice and Norberdo. I know I took your spot, Carmel.
I could go back on it.
All right. Okay. All right, I'll go back on it. Yeah, just because I like you, Jacob.
Honored.
Okay, Carmel. Well, thank you. I know you're very busy.
You haven't had a job since then or anything?
Okay. It's not a committee report. Oh, good night. But I wanted to get back to this group because we were the ones who kind of proposed this indemnification and defense agreement. And we had an ordinance that had one reading. And as a result of that reading, we kind of took another look, I guess, at who our volunteers are. And we think about just this board, perhaps, and the ZBA and the HPC. Those three boards all generally have an attorney when they're meeting, and they also have training that's required. But we have lots of other civic groups that have volunteers. And the way this indemnification was written, it would cover all the volunteers in town. And when we started to look at this and to see how the other committees and boards and commissions work, we came to the realization that there's not a lot, or there hasn't, hasn't been a lot of oversight of those commissions, boards, and committees. And there hasn't been a council liaison, for example. So they've been kind of, when there've been a meeting, they've been kind of running on their own. So we decided that we probably, we, we need a volunteer handbook to give to the folks so that they know exactly what their obligations are, what is expected of them. So I'm working on a handbook with two other folks on the council. We felt that we really needed to appoint these council liaisons so that you'd have a council that goes to all these civic committee meetings. So, and that hasn't been decided as of yet, will be soon. And we decided they also probably need some training, whether it's just our town attorney coming and talking to them a little bit about what their obligations are, what the mission is of each of the board commission or committee that they're working on. So that's just to say that we're a little bit aways from looking at this and approving it or moving forward with it until we have some of these taking place, the training, the volunteer handbook, the council liaison in particular. the volunteer handbook, the council liaison in particular.
That could take some bit of time. Would it be possible to cover the land use boards prior to the other volunteer boards being covered?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that.
I mean, the issue is, we're going to have some significant projects coming up, and I think it would make sense for the land use boards in particular to have-
Yep.
-certainty about their legal protections.
I get it, and I, I will, I, you know, I'm working with two other people. I'll mention that, and I thought of that as well, too. Perhaps you should just have those boards.
I would suspect we're most likely to get sued.
You're probably most likely to get sued, but on the other hand, we are trained, we do get some training, we have an attorney here who helps us out when things come up. But I, that doesn't, I, I know, and we have seen the example of it.
But that's more reason to- Our former chair was sued a couple of years ago personally-
Yeah, I, I get it. Yeah, yeah.
And counsel persons.
And that's more reason, I think, to protect the land use boards because we have these protocols in place already. While those other groups are establishing their own protocols, perhaps the land use boards could be covered.
I'll take it up with the two people I'm working with.
Thank you, Council.
Get back to you, yeah.
And so you're going to update the 2014 volunteer handbook?
There is a volunteer handbook that the town produces, but it's, I, I looked at it already, and I have another prototype that I'm working with-
Okay.
And have updated that actually already, but we'll be then comparing it with, with the town's volunteer handbook to see what needs to be added or whatever. So that, I have a commitment to have that by the 1st of January.
Okay.
So we're working on it. And I think the committee liaisons will be appointed pretty soon, I hope. And, yeah, and then we'll take it from there. We also, I, I would recommend that we have our township attorney talk to each of the volunteer groups to give the little training rather than anything more formal than that if they have a handbook, because the handbook does cover everything that they're supposed to be doing. Okay? That's your update.
Any other committee updates?
Um, no, not right now.
Okay. Well, we still have one person packing up here. Can we move to bills?
Sure. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move.
Second.
I don't have it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
All right. That didn't take all that long.
Well, Arts wasn't in here to scrutinize.
Well, then I would move to go into executive session to discuss board personnel for 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Interesting.